The average selling price last week is almost $400,000.
Yep, I think it's time.
All right, ready?
Could you remind our senior moments?
I'd call a meeting in order, please rise from pleasurable dents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we have a new member of the town, relatively new in town, and also the new pastor at the Holly Springs United Methodist Church, Jim Littleton, welcome to your inaugural invocation. Please come to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor. My family and I moved here in July when we started our appointment, and we're just delighted to be part of the Holly Springs community.
Glad to have you here.
Thank you. Let's go to God in prayer. Almighty God, you give us so many blessings in life, the chance, God, to work in a meaningful way, the ability, God, to love you and love our neighbors, the ability to serve, serve others, and serve you. I'm thankful for this community that gives us the opportunity to do all three of those things. Be with the leaders here tonight, God, be with the people gathered here. Give us wisdom, God, to do things in the best way possible. Give us courage, God, to speak up when we need to, God, and also the mind to know when things are in a good place. God, we ask these things in the name of your Son, who reigns with you and the Holy Spirit, one God, now and evermore. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. I, Member Four, suggest an approval of the September 16th meeting agenda on Mayor Pro Tem.
Motion to adopt the agenda as printed.
Second. It must have been made in second all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passed unanimously. Now, before we get to public comment period, we're going to do something different we've never done before. Y'all ready? There has been so many emails, I haven't even had a chance to answer all of them, so I apologize for that, but there's also been a lot of information going around that may not be totally accurate, so I've asked Gina Clapp, the Director of Planning, to fill you in on what's going on and where we are in the process, and I think this may answer a lot of your questions, and if not, we'll take it from there. So Gina, thank you for doing this.
As the mayor had mentioned, we've got a lot of emails going into town halls, email boxes, town council staff, and we're excited to have our property owners in Holly Springs very active and engaged in community planning. That is very important. That's what makes Holly Springs what it is. However, we do want to make sure that everybody is aware of where we are from a town perspective in regards to the Ram Cat Village PUD. I'm not saying that you can't speak this evening if you have some concerns that you would like to share with us that we have not already heard via the emails, but we do have a public hearing that will be scheduled at some point in time which everybody will be notified of. And so we as the town, we do have a lot of the same concerns that we have addressed to the developers. Part of the team is here right now this evening, and we want to make sure that you're aware that we also share some of those same concerns. Some of our largest concerns include the density that is proposed, the proposed smaller lot sizes that we don't have anywhere else in Holly Springs, a lack of transition from the Sunset Ridge neighborhood to the proposed smaller lots of Ram Cat, alleys adjacent to neighboring properties, and transportation improvements. And so, as I said, we're still early in this process from the standpoint that we are still working with the developer and going through preliminary drafts. What is actually under review and under consideration right now is a PUD master plan. And what a PUD is, it's a project that doesn't follow the town's normal zoning regulations, so the developer is proposing their own zoning districts. A PUD master plan is simply that, it's zoning. It is creating a zoning map for this project and this project alone. So what they're going to be including as part of their proposal will be what the allowed uses will be for the property, where the lot sizes and different lot types can be located, the dimensions for those lots, any appearance requirements that they may have, road cross-sections which may or may not be the same as the town's, landscape requirements, and all other types of zoning requirements that the town would typically have. We allow the developer to evaluate what would be appropriate for their project, what they want to keep the same as the town, or what they might want to change. So that is where we're currently at with them, is in discussion about their proposal and what we feel is in conformance with our comp plan and for the adjacent property owners. And so the full set of plans that we are currently reviewing, so everything that we have that we are reviewing is currently on the town's webpage. So if you go to our webpage, www.hollyspringsnc.us, on the top, there's a residents tab. Click that tab, there's what's coming to town. You can find Ram Cat Village that way. That set of plans is the plans that we are currently reviewing. It's our understanding from some of the emails, we've got some little photo shots of some plan that the developer shared with you. He was being really actually honest with you and sharing with you what his next steps are. We as staff, we're not even there yet. He has not shared that with us yet because we're not at that point. We are still currently talking zoning with the developer. And so basically where we are at is we are waiting for them to submit a detailed traffic analysis. Once they get that in, then we can start assessing some of the road improvements and other transportation improvements that may be required with this project. So you may not see a lot out on those plan sets because we don't know yet what that traffic study is going to tell us needs to be considered. Once we get that, they're also going to be looking at, and they have heard you, they have heard us, and they have told us that they will be making some changes. We don't know what those changes will be. But once the developer feels that he has adequately addressed any comments that we have had or that you've shared with him, and that he has submitted what he is saying, this is my final offer, is when we will then schedule a public hearing. Like all public hearings, adjacent property owners will get notified in the mail. We're also going to be putting signs up on the property, so as soon as you see those signs on the property or you get a letter in the mail, you will be able to go online and the most current version of those plans will be out there. So you will always have access to what we have access to. If you have questions, there's plenty of links out there to all of us as staff. We're all here. We work for you. Keep in mind, we are town employees. We work for the town council, which we work for the town manager, who works for the council, who works for you. So you elect the town council.
That was a good recovery, wasn't it? That was a great recovery.
Want to just really clarify that we are not here working for the developer. We are here working for our residents of Holly Springs. And so we really do want to make sure that, you know, any voice that you have is heard and that the public hearing will be scheduled, and that is your first step in this process. So a PUD file is a little bit different than some other things. People are familiar with rezonings where it goes to Planning Board for Review and Recommendation, comes to Council for Public Hearing, and that night they make a decision. A PUD is huge and has big impacts. So the way a planning and development public hearing will work is once we get that final proposal from the developer, we're going to do a joint public hearing. Both Planning Board members and town council will be present at that meeting. And then after that, after we receive all those comments, the only thing the town council's going to do that night is forward that set of plans to the Planning Board. And then it goes to the next Planning Board meeting for their review and their recommendation. And unlike a rezoning or other projects that require public hearing, the Planning Board is going to have heard your comments and concerns. So they will have that information when they evaluate these plans. And then they will review that. They may recommend approval, they may recommend denial, they may recommend approval with changes. And then that will go back to the town council, and then the town council will then ultimately make a determination whether to approve or not to approve this plan. Now, keep in mind also that Ram Cat Village is an existing planned unit development. So there is an existing plan that is approved, that this developer can submit a subdivision plan and use those zoning regulations that are currently approved and in place. And so what he is wanting to do is to change those regulations. And so that's kind of where we're at. And once the determination is made whether these amendments are approved and those are the zoning of that property or the old one, will be when that developer can then start moving through the subdivision process. So if you've heard that the town has approved this project, we have not. We are still in the early staff review and negotiation phase with the developer, and so we really appreciate getting all the feedback that we have. It's been tremendous, and we appreciate it. And like I said, a lot of your comments are comments that we have already had and have been expressing with the developer the last month or two that this project's been in review. So wanted to share that with all of you and kind of give you an idea of where we're at in this process and what this is all about. If you do have any thoughts when you go to public comment period?
We have a couple.
You are more than welcome to have your three minutes.
Thank you, Gina. Thank you very much. One of the other reasons why I asked Gina to do this, and I appreciate you doing this, is of all the emails I've gotten, I've gotten one from a very good friend of mine who said, "I am alarmed, the town has approved the development." I just want to make sure you knew that that is not the case. So we're just trying to clear up the situation, tell you where we are, and we have listened to all your comments, and I appreciate you being very honest with many of your concerns, and thank you, Gina, for doing this, okay?
Thanks, Gina.
Thank you, Gina.
All right. Now we'll open the public comment period, and the first lady is Amy Gardner. Think I saw Amy come in? Yep, I did. So again, for the record.
Yes.
State your name, address, and please keep your comments. About three minutes, please.
My name's Amy Gardner. I'm at 692 Sky Mont Drive in Holly Springs, and I just have a few things. I've, you've all gotten an email from me as well this weekend. I wanted to thank Gina for explaining where we were exactly in the process and how that works. I did want to just say real quickly, a main concern of ours is the density and the traffic added to Holly Springs Road along with the schools, the three schools that are right there, and it's just a real headache to get from one end of that to the other. And you can never do it in a timely way. So adding 500 or so more vehicles into it was one of my initial questions that I had at a meeting that we had with the developer in May that I was a part of. And I had raised concerns at that moment, and they assured me that that's not a problem because it's on record that Holly Springs Road is going to be widened to four lanes. And I was like, oh, really? Okay. Well, later I looked into that, and that's not to be completed until at least 2017, somewhere between 2017 and 2026. So they're wanting to do all this, and then we'll get the roads, you know, in 10 years. So I don't want to go without saying that I want to emphasize about the natural beauty of the area. A lot of us have moved to this area because it is natural. The hardwoods, the pine trees, the wildlife that can sometimes be a nuisance is also very beautiful. And to clear cut something like that is really a shame because it's happened a lot around here with improvements. I did want to also say that this is Holly Springs. It's not Raleigh, it's not Cary, it's not Apex. We don't have to feel like we have to be more urban. People don't move out here. I honestly don't believe they move out here to live in an urban setting. And I would like to just say that, you know, we'd like to keep Holly Springs, Holly Springs, you know? Be who we are and be proud of it. And really, that's all that I have to say. I thank you very much for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Thanks, Amy.
Appreciate it. The other gentleman speaking is Peter, and you're going to have to help me with the pronunciation of the last name. So if you'll tell us your name and address, then I'll know how to pronounce your last name.
My name is Peter Villetson. I live on 213 Chris Mill Lane, and I want to thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to speak this evening.
Sure.
And you'll probably be familiar with some of what I'm about to say as it's taken mostly from an email I sent. I said I'm a resident of Sunset Ridge North and a citizen of this town. I have lived here with my wife and three children for nearly nine years, and we are proud to call Holly Springs and Sunset Ridge our home. I'm here to express some concerns with regards to the Ram Cat Planned Unit Development currently being proposed, and I don't take this action lightly. I have known that this area would eventually be developed and have watched closely the plans that were made available on the town's website. I didn't have much a problem with what was proposed in those plans. At a recent developer meeting, however, a subdivision plan was shown that was quite different from plans currently available. I understand the town planners have not yet seen this plan, yet this gives us insight into Lennar's desires for this project. Gone are the larger neighborhood and homestead front-loaded lots, and instead we have a new subdivision crammed with nearly 350 mostly backloaded smaller homes with a density of just under six homes per acre. This is larger than any current project that I know of in Holly Springs. The subdivision plan for Ram Cat shows a network of alleys not present in any version of the plans on the town's website. Just about every house in the new development will utilize these alleys. In addition, alleys will border the entire length of Sunset Ridge North and beyond that, just a 20-foot buffer. 20-foot is about the distance from here to you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not aware of any other developments in Holly Springs where subdivisions border each other in such stark and grotesque manner. Backloaded alleys running along the backyards of neighboring houses do not promote aesthetic transition or social interactions, only tall fences. The town should be concerned at the precedent success as well as the fact that Lennar failed to disclose this in any of the plans available on the town's website. Lennar would do well to take a page from Sunset Ridge North and leave a 40- to 60-foot buffer of existing wooded growth. In addition, Lennar homes should border their neighbors with front-loaded houses that have backyards facing Sunset Ridge, providing a private, safe, secure, and neighborly transition. In my opinion, Lennar misled the citizens of Holly Springs as well as the town with the plans currently on the website. It is no wonder residents of Sunset Ridge have responded so negatively, but also with the hope that Lennar will actually work with its neighbors and the town to solve some of these issues. Traffic is a legitimate concern that should not be so readily dismissed, and turning a blind eye is not a solution. According to Lennar's subdivision plan, approximately 350 homes are going to be added to the heart of Holly Springs on a road that during morning and evening rush hour, school start and dismissal hours, and lunch hours packed with cars. With a U.S. average of two cars per household, that is potentially 700 more cars on the road, right in between three schools, a fire station, a new law enforcement center, and a shopping center all served by a single traffic light, not to mention all the construction traffic for the next two to three years. The town requires developers to conduct transportation studies and mitigate their development's impact on roadways. As we know, the studies are currently in progress, but hopefully the citizens will be able to view and analyze the results when they're available. And also, how will Lennar mitigate Ram Cat's impact on Holly Springs Road? Waiting for traffic to overload Holly Springs Road and then issuing debt to try to solve the problem is not an acceptable course of action. It has become apparent in some cases that council wants current citizens who are expressing concerns to provide hard facts and supporting evidence, proof as it were. The citizens cannot produce traffic studies but only point out the heavy traffic we currently suffer, and that will get worse with more high-density development. The citizens cannot provide facts regarding extensive use of backloaded alleys, only that dozens of homes will possibly have their backyards border such an alley with essentially no buffer, plus dozens more facing right into it. In my opinion, the town council needs to look out for its current citizens first and foremost. I only hope that the town council is asking these same questions, not only of Lennar, but of themselves. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And obviously, we will do all that. We will ask the questions, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
All right, at this point in time, we'll close the public hearing and go directly to, are we good, Cap?
Captain.
We good? All right. Item 7A, a special presentation, Operation Amber's Aspiration, Captain Michael Patterson. I was there. It was a great evening, but go ahead. I won't steal any of your thunder.
All right, good evening. I'm going to try and talk over this microphone so I don't have to lean in too much. First off, I want to thank my boss, Chief Herring, for allowing me to do this. It was such an awesome, eye-opening experience. I want to thank you, Mr. Simmons, for supporting it, and the entire town council for supporting this. It's a great staff up here. Every one of these guys donated to this cause, and I'm very proud of you guys. Not that I expected anything less. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, I'm here tonight on behalf of the Police Department, Myri Tavern, and CrossFit Zeal. CrossFit Zeal's owner, Mike Kelly, is right there. He's a guy with a shaved head. He lost a bet during this fundraiser. He dared the gym to raise, I think it was $2,500, and they surpassed it. I think it ended up raising about seven grand, so he had a full head of hair for this, and it's gone. For those of you who don't know Amber, she's a soon-to-be three-year-old girl from Holly Springs who has retinoblastoma. Retinoblastoma is a cancer of the eyes that most commonly affects children and is rare in adults. On August 21st of last year, Amber was diagnosed with this terrible disease, and shortly after her diagnosis, she lost her right eye. And this was due to a large tumor that posed a threat on her life, and if it was not removed immediately. In order to save her left eye, Amber now has to undergo monthly trips to Memorial Sloan-Kettering Cancer Center in New York City for an eye exam where chemo treatment is given directly to her eye. The gift being presented to the family tonight is from an accumulation of efforts. These efforts included us, the police department. We also reached out to local businesses, and there are a lot of individual donors as Most of the proceeds came from the businesses in town. I think over 40 or 50 businesses donated, and then there were 25, I believe, individual sponsors. And then in addition to that, Myri did their manual Myri Palooza, donated proceeds from that. We did a fitness competition at CrossFit Zeal. Amber named our team Team Sparkly Unicorn.
Sparkly Unicorn?
Yes, sir. And we got first place.
Of course.
You had to with that thing.
It was awesome. We had Sparkly Unicorn shirts, headbands with glitter. I tried to glitter glue stuff. Arts and craft is how it's strengthened for me, and it was glitter all over the gym. Some of it, I believe, is not up yet, so.
There's glue.
So through all these events, through, I think the three most important things here are through the town leadership, the town people, and the businesses in this town, we were able to raise $20,000 to give to this family.
Great.
Before I call them up and introduce them and present this, I want to say it's amazing, it's very amazing what we can achieve when we put our hearts and minds together. This fundraising effort began with a vision of kindness and awareness that the best aspect of human nature is represented by those who step up and help others in need. It is simply remarkable to think of what we achieved through this fundraising effort. So to the businesses of Holly Springs, the town council members, and the individual efforts, I thank you. I thank you from the bottom of my heart, and this could not have been a success without all of you, the individuals, the leadership, and the businesses. So I'm going to ask the family to come up, and I'm going to present them with this gift. And I'm going to tell you, this two-year-old, soon-to-be three, is amazing, and she's such an inspiration to me.
We played ball. I had the privilege of talking to her parents, but we played ball. She's a little shy tonight. She wasn't shy that evening, and she's a heck of a ball player. Let me tell you that.
So I'm going to present this to the family. It's a gift from the police department, basically the town of Holly Springs. Amanda, these guys live and work in Holly Springs, and we were very glad to help. In addition to the check, I have one more thing I wanted to give you. In addition to the, um, the check, I have one more thing I wanted to give you. I told you guys, Team Sparkly Unicorn got first place. Right? We were the strongest team out there. But actually, we weren't the strongest team out there. This was the strongest team out there.
Yep.
If you guys will accept this, I want you to have my first-place medal.
There you go. All right.
That is all I've got.
Very good.
Thank you guys for listening to me.
Good job.
Thank you.
Best of luck. Gen item seven A, under request and communications, the Holly Springs Boy Scouts. Uh, Larry O'Neal? I think I've seen him before.
Just a couple times, yeah.
Come on down. We're also talking about Tanner, right? Yep.
Yeah, thank you, just, uh, again, this is, Boy Scouts and the service of this community is still alive and well, and it's gonna be for many, many years. Uh, we were here a couple, uh, few, some weeks ago, we had Tanner Mizell was, uh, asked for your, the waiving the fee of the thing, and he's completed his project, and he asked to him to come back, and, uh, we've got a couple of pictures here to, to show what he's done.
Oh, wow, how nice.
Uh, good evening.
Good evening, Tanner.
As, as, Mr. O'Neal, uh, introduced me, my name's Tanner Mizell, and I'd just like to thank you for waiving this fee. Like, it really helped with the production of the entire thing, and it required a lot of planning and like, uh, some redoing of the plans and a lot of work with the, uh, with the town and the school and White County in general. But I'd like to say it was like, it was a huge success. It was, uh, posted in, uh, the school newsletter, I believe, and, uh, the project beneficiaries don't stop talking to me about how much they, or the PTA members love it. Oh, and, uh, one thing I also did that I didn't have to have a form in for was replacement, was replacement of...
Are you a unicorn, Benny Chance?
Um, was, I replaced some landscape timbers that were really out of shape on the side of, of the school, and they also really appreciated that, and I'm so glad that, that my work is appreciated at the school.
That's good.
Uh, also, we have a two, another project going on right now. If you've ridden by the Holly Springs Elementary School, you've probably seen the sign that's all torn up and...
Yep.
Uh, we started to build a wall and we got about halfway through, we've realized it was like this. So, so we're gonna be tearing it out and they're gonna rebuild part of it, and Anthony Lachi is a Boy Scout that's working on that. We also built a, uh, or tilled it up, we built an herb garden in the back. Uh, you can't see it where Tanner's project is, but it's just this side in front of the school. Uh, well, if you look at the picture to the right, uh, I'm pointing here, I know you can see that, but, uh, behind these bushes on the right-hand side, all the grassy area, we've killed all the grass, tilled it all up, bricked it all up, and that's gonna be an herb garden they're gonna plant, uh, this fall for the kids to learn, and it'll be through the spring, and so we're working. So Anthony is also watch, uh, working on that as part of the school, so, anyway, thank you for that.
We got one more that we're gonna ask you to help with.
Go right ahead, Larry. You're on a roll.
Hello, everybody. Um, so, for my Eagle project, what we're gonna do is we're building a deck that is overlooking the baseball fields up next to the memorial on, uh, the top side of Wumble. It's where that patchy area of rock is, we're trying to build over it, make it look a little nicer, so people can sit under the shade of the trees and look over the baseball fields while their kids play, or just sit there and enjoy their time. So, um, for the site map, you see the patch of trees in the bottom right, that's, oh, okay, it's right here. There you go.
There you go.
So it's gonna be right around here, and it's a ten-by, or thirty-by-ten deck, so it's rather large, and here's your plans for it, if you wanted to see that. Um, but here's your path, and there's gonna be a little concrete transition going on to the thirty-by-ten deck, and it's just gonna hang off. It's also four feet deep, so that slope is gonna be, um, plastered with concrete and put slopes up, so, or, uh, pedestals. Um, and I was just asking the town if they would be willing to waive the seventy-five-dollar building fee.
I think you're on a roll. Shall I ask the council for a consensus opinion on this?
Do we need, do we need a motion?
Do we need a motion or just...
Should we do this or not?
I don't know.
Motion to waive the fees for Jason Wilkie in association with his Eagle Scout project to construct a deck overlooking Wumble Park.
Second.
Must've made a second one in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? You're on a roll. See you ne- see you next, next meeting?
Yes, yeah.
You got one more?
One more.
Larry, just keep, just keep 'em coming.
All right.
We'd love updates.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason will come back and let you see your pictures of the finished project, definitely.
That'd be great.
Uh, Joanie, if you could back up just a couple for the site map, I'm, thirty seconds more, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Uh, right here, uh, this, this wooded area in two thousand and five was, was cleared out and a lot of cleaned out, and in the middle, uh, well, where is it? About right along here, there was a historical grave there that was a two thousand and five Boy Scout project, legal project that built around like that, but needless to say, all the rain and sunshine, everything gets built back up and we covered it up, you can't even see it. So, uh, a guy named, a young guy named Jake Meyer, uh, is gonna be clearing out from about right here, all the way through here, and we're gonna be killing the weeds and the, all that kind of stuff, cutting down all the volunteer trees, and, and Mr. Bradley is, uh, has consented, and we're gonna have a little help from the town with a chipper and stuff like that, and I'm working with Jim Canata, uh, who's also an excellent guy here and a good friend, so, uh, we'll have that done hopefully before it gets too cold, so. And thanks to Mr. Sack for suggesting this, that would, we appreciate that. Oh.
Get the SWAT team out there.
That, that, that means we'll see you again soon?
Yep.
That means we'll see you again soon? Okay.
Maybe yes, maybe no.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you for doing these projects.
Good job.
Good job, good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Gen item seven B, under request communications, the street tree regulations for new subdivisions. And Gina, what happened to... There you are. She's there.
Well, good evening.
Good evening again.
Hopefully, everybody loves street trees so much that I get an applause at the end.
We were looking forward to this.
So, uh, tonight is really, uh, request and a communication, it's really just communication with the council, um, to give you a little bit of a primer on street tree regulations, where we're at, um, in the town of Holly Springs in regards to street trees. Both town councils have had some questions of where do we go with street trees? Internally, we have a lot of very healthy and fun conversations between planning, engineering, and our public works department about street trees. Um, so it's, uh, definitely an ongoing conversation that we're having, and so at the end of, uh, the presentation or primer, whatever you wanna call it, I don't necessarily am expecting any kind of motion or decision or determination, um, just kind of leaving it open as far as where we go from here.
Pursuing.
Um, so just wanted to kinda start off, um, that way. And so really, you know, the question that we always are asking ourselves is what do we do with street trees? Do we keep our current street tree regulations that we have in place? Now, keep in mind, and we'll talk about it, is that we have new street tree regulations in place that we have not yet seen installed to see exactly how they function. So we'll talk about that. Um, do we keep streets, keep street trees but move them as far as where we would require them to be placed, or do we just not require or allow street trees, period? And so these are the conversations that we're always having amongst ourselves. And so, we always do come back, though, to the idea of why do we have street trees? And street trees really do have a lot of value for our community. And so primarily, for as long as we've been planning in Holly Springs, the goal of Holly Springs is to create village character, and what creates village character more than the street trees? And they really do add a lot of value to our neighborhoods. Um, they provide valuable shade for the roads, parked cars, people walking along our sidewalks. Um, they're definitely a, a safety feature. There are many studies out there that prove that street trees planted in the right-of-way reduce feeding, so we're always hearing about wanting speed humps, plant street trees. Uh, the, street trees obviously are good for the environment, and so, obviously, with urban cooling, as we, um, do develop, we do need to make sure that we do plant trees to cool our community, um, plus the street trees filter our air for us. They create a tree canopy when trees are lost. Whenever you build any project, we're gonna lose trees in our community, and so by requiring street trees within our subdivisions maintains a tree canopy internal to the subdivisions, not just a perimeter around the outside of the project. Um, once again, they're good for our health, and they do increase and maintain property values, which are also many studies out there in regards to street trees. And so this year, um, in the budget, there was consultant money placed into the planning and zoning, uh, budget, where we will be hiring a consultant to study the current state of street trees in Holly Springs, looking at all of our neighborhoods that have street trees, what condition they are in, um, recommendations for maintenance, planning, and the benefits or future locations of how we should handle street trees in Holly Springs. And so with that being said, Holly Springs has a lot of street tree neighborhoods. By far, the majority of neighborhoods in Holly Springs currently have street trees. And so a little bit to the colorful, um, listing of street trees that we have here, the white, um, neighborhoods are planned unit developments, the blue are traditional neighborhood developments, pink are development option neighborhoods. Those are the subdivisions that have street trees, and I'm not gonna say solely because they're required to, but that ordinances require street trees to be planted in those developments.
Is this an inclusive list?
Um, I actually, as I was looking at it, I realized that there's a couple more that are not on here.
Right.
So, yeah, I mean, there's a lot more.
Sunset Ridge.
Well, actually Sunset Ridge, I'll call it south, um, does not have street trees, but there's the Pierce Pud, which is the portion of Sunset Ridge that you live in.
Yeah, but, yeah, that's where I am.
Right, so you're, you're technically in Pierce Pud.
I knew, I didn't even know that.
I didn't either.
And then Holly Park is missing on here, um, which has street trees.
Oh, part of, but, I never heard of it before.
Yes.
Good.
Um, and then the subdivisions that are in yellow on this list are subdivisions that were not required to plant street trees by ordinances, but the developers voluntarily installed street trees. Um, so quite a range of how and why we have street trees in the neighborhoods that we do. And, you know, we're still currently going out and evaluating all of our neighborhoods to see where we stand, um, with street trees. And so obviously, with street trees come concerns, and over the years, we've adopted different policies and regulations as lessons have been learned, um, best practices are developed in our professions in regards to these, um, different concerns. And so primarily, the biggest concern we hear is about roots. Um, their impacts on our sidewalks, curb and street impacts, as well as utility line obstructions. And what I'll talk about in a few minutes is we did have, um, some engineering, design, and construction standards that have been adopted to help alleviate some of those concerns. Um, the second area that we primarily hear concerns on is in regards to the tree canopy and the branches, and that, um, dwells from the tree species. Um, but since we've started street trees, um, we've also adopted regulations that have now limit what species can be utilized as street trees. We also have had, um, concerns regarding traffic control signage being obstructed, as well as our street lights, um, and then our street and signs also being, um, obstructed. In two thousand and twelve, which is the new street tree regulations that we're still need to wait to see how it looks on the ground, um, has, hopefully, will alleviate some of those concerns. And then we also hear concerns about this, uh, the branches blocking streets and sidewalks from them being usable, as well as the concern for possible falling limbs if there's a dead branch in a tree. And really, those two items are handled through proper maintenance of our street trees. And so what I'm gonna do is try to go through a quick history of our street tree regulations in Holly Springs. I'm not gonna go in detail, I promise. Um, so street tree regulations started in nineteen ninety-five, where Holly Springs required street trees to be planted for all planned unit developments. At that time, the majority of the projects in Holly Springs were being developed through a planned unit development, so most of the projects at that time were being required to plant street trees. And part of that, the ordinance did require that a homeowners association be formed, and that the covenants were required to assign the responsibility of the maintenance of those trees. In nineteen ninety-six, the town then created a new, um, residential zoning district called Traditional Neighborhoods. And in that, uh, type of neighborhood, the whole idea is to bring homes closer and create the more village-type style neighborhoods, and so once again, street trees were required, and in the, uh, Traditional Neighborhood ordinance, it specified that the trees were to be planted in the right-of-way. Um, and then there was a couple provisions for some front yard, but primarily in the right-of-way. They required, um, large trees to be planted forty to fifty feet apart, and small trees thirty feet apart, and they only provided four different species options to be utilized for street trees. In two thousand and six, the town amended the unified development ordinance and required street trees to be provided in development option neighborhoods. So some of our early development option neighborhoods do not have street trees, but all of our development option neighborhoods today do have street trees, but we didn't provide any specific regulations on spacing or location of those trees. In two thousand and seven, the, um, town adopted engineering construction standards in regards to street trees, and one of the things that was included in that was, once again, specifying that homeowners association covenants were to be required of any neighborhood utilizing street trees to assign the maintenance responsibility. This was an adopted resolution, um, by the town to, um, develop those standards, and the reasoning for putting that here again was the fact that not all of our subdivisions were planned unit developments, and so there were other types of projects utilizing street trees, so we needed to make sure that, um, responsibility for maintenance was being assigned. Developers were doing it upon our request anyways, but we just wanted to make sure that there was something in writing. We also then added a one-year warranty from the developer, so that those trees would have one year to, um, get it themselves established, and then also added the requirement for root guards and shields to be installed when street trees were utilized in neighborhoods. Two thousand and nine, we amended the development procedures manual, and this is where we added a new section to that, which was a listing of all the different landscape materials for all landscape applications in Holly Springs of preferred landscaping, um, species that we would like to see. As a part of that, there were fifteen appropriate street trees identified as a part of the development procedures manual update. Then in two thousand and twelve, and then upheld again in two thousand and thirteen by the council, was the adoption of Poli's, Policy Statement P-39, which was a street tree maintenance policy, which assigned, once again, the responsibility for maintenance of street trees, where it was, um, confirming that the town would be responsible for functional pruning, um, and that we would remove a branch or a tree if there was imminent threat, and then also, once again, confirming that the property owners were responsible for maintenance or replacement of those trees. In two thousand and twelve, we adopted a whole new set of street tree regulations, and the biggest part of that was that we were now gonna start requiring street trees of all residential subdivisions in Holly Springs, and that they were to be placed in the right-of-way. Tonight, um, you have some UDO amendments that'll be coming before you, which has a couple other amendments and updates to our street tree regulations regarding multiple species, and some inspections confirmation information. And so, kind of where we are today. In September of two thousand and twelve, we adopted the current street tree requirements, and what these requirements are, as I stated, is all residential subdivisions in Holly Springs are now required to provide street trees. And the type of tree depends on the setback of the property. If you have a twenty-foot or greater setback, that is, all of our traditional straight R-10 subdivisions, R-15, R-8 subdivisions, um, have a twenty-foot setback, they're required to plant a large deciduous tree every fifty to sixty-five feet. If you have a, bless you, if you have a setback of less than twenty feet, that would be primarily in our planned unit developments that utilize some modified front setback requirements in our development options neighborhoods. They're required to plant a small deciduous tree every thirty to forty-five feet. And the reasoning for the difference in that canopy is, in that spacing is based on the canopy width of a large tree versus a small tree. Um, there's also spacing modifications, so it's a range where most communities say every forty feet, every fifty feet, there has to be tree. Ours is a range, because we now also have spacing modifications. So as we're going through the preliminary plan review for a subdivision, and we're evaluating the street trees, one of the things that they have to do is they need to place the street trees outside of a vision clearance triangle at an intersection, and that is determined by our engineering department on speed, the angle of the intersection, and all of that. And what that does is that maintains that intersection clea- clear and free from trees, so the tree branches won't be growing over stop signs, which has been an issue in a lot of our, um, old, original street tree neighborhoods. Um, we also require street trees to be planted at least twenty-five feet from the pole of all of the street lights. So there is a detailed street, um, tree plan that comes in later, after the actual town council approval, with a final street tree layout, once we know exactly where those light poles are going, so we can make sure that the tree canopies don't block the street lights. Um, we also, like I said, it has specified that the planting location for the street trees are in the right-of-way. However, we have a lot of curvy roads in Holly Springs, and so when there are major curves in roadways or at, um, different types of intersections, if there is a vision clearance issue, then those street trees are moved on to the private property side for those locations. And so we wanna make sure that the street trees are not blocking our, our streets for clear vision as people are driving down our roads. And so ultimately, what this has done also has reduced the number of trees because of the new spacing requirements. And so we are anticipating to have a half to, at least a third less, if not a half or more, less trees in our subdivisions than what we previously had. And so currently, I'm not sure that this is also a comprehensive list, but a pretty good list of all the neighborhoods that we have approved with the new street tree requirements. Um, the Parks at Bass Lake, if you haven't been back there, out on Grigsby, by the Sug Farm Park, they are now under construction, as well as the, um, Wood Creek Town Homes. And so it's a race between those two neighborhoods of which one's gonna be the first neighborhood to plant their street trees, and then we're gonna start getting an idea of how our new street trees, um, actually work. And both of these neighborhoods actually do have issues where some of the trees are being moved to private property side, and some are in the right-of-way. So we're gonna get a really good idea of how that looks and how that works within a single neighborhood having a variety of locations of street trees. Um, they also have a variety of small and large deciduous trees as well for those neighborhoods. And so tonight, what you're gonna have for consideration as part of all those UDO amendments are two modifications to the street tree requirements. And these were actually presented to us by a couple different landscape architects that were offering, you know, positive solutions to street trees in Holly Springs. And one of them, and it made sense, it was something we had talked about, um, previously anyways, was to require multiple species within a neighborhood, and specifically on a street. So that way, if there is a disease that comes in for a particular species of tree, the entire block doesn't get wiped out, um, and then also, it slows down any passing of a disease from tree to tree if you have multiple species on a street. The second part is to assist in inspection of our street trees, where we will require the nursery tags to be left on the trees prior to us going out and inspecting, and then also receiving a written statement from the nursery where the street trees were, um, procured from, verifying the species of tree that is, are being installed within that particular phase of that neighborhood. And so, quick, how do they, um, our regulations compare from our original nineteen ninety-five, our first set with the planning and development, to today? Um, basically, as I said, we're gonna have less trees, um, we required trees to be forty feet apart, now we have greater separation. We now have clearance of street lights, we require vision clearance at intersections, which also then equates to vision clearance of our street signs, and we are, hopefully, this evening, we'll have better inspection verification of species in place. So basically, in our thought, less trees plus better locations is gonna cause reduced maintenance. And so, an example that we can show of how our street tree regulations have changed is the Chelsea Woods neighborhood off of Bass Lake Road, um, in Stinson. They were originally approved in two thousand, they were a traditional neighborhood, and they have sixty-three lots, and they were required to provide street trees fifty feet on center as part of a traditional neighborhood, and they planted tulip poplar, which was one of the four allowed species, and they had sixty-one trees. They had, because their lots were so narrow, they were having issues with mail delivery and driveway visibility for people pulling in and out of their driveways. So they approached the town and wanted to know if there was anything that they could do, and at that point in time, we were actually in the process of amending the UDO. And so they waited until the new standards were in place and they came back, and they modified their plan to meet the new standards. Um, they provided crepe myrtles, I think they're supposed to do single stem, but they actually do have multi-stem out there. Um, so we're gonna monitor the trimming and maintenance and pruning of those trees, but they reduced the number of trees from sixty-one to thirty-three in result of the new regulations. And so this was the original site plan that they planted to with their tulip poplars. And then this shows, you can see underlying the original plan, the green are the trees that are there today, meeting the requirements of the new regulations, and then the blue triangles are where the street lights are located at, and then you can see some red dots, which are mailboxes. And then a quick photo of what the neighborhood, um, looks like with the new trees. And so, now, I'm gonna take you on a quick tour of Holly Springs. So the pictures you're about to see are Holly Springs. And so, we, as I said, we don't have any examples of the spacing or the difference of trees based on our new regulations, 'cause we haven't had any neighborhoods planted. Um, but I am gonna show you a variety of neighborhoods, and we have quite the variety in Holly Springs, of trees planted in the right-of-way, trees planted on the private side, and then also some neighborhoods with no street trees. And so, uh- And so, for trees planted in the right-of-way, what you can see here is, I'm trying to give you a little picture tour showing some in different stages of planting and maturity. And so we have some younger trees, but you can see where they're already starting to fill in, provide some shade. And then this is a mature neighborhood, where you can see the street trees are providing a canopy over the road. Visually, it helps bring the roadway in, which helps slow down traffic. This tree, street happens to have a lot of on-street parking as well, I think they have some alleys in that neighborhood. And the trees are very well-maintained, so you can see where this, there's plenty of room on the sidewalks for people to walk, the cars can park comfortably, trucks can drive through this neighborhood very well. And then, some additional street trees planted in the right-of-way, this is some pretty new planting here. Once again, another mature neighborhood, showing the canopy of trees and their visual for slowing down traffic, and that they're being well-maintained for sidewalk accessibility. And then, here are some examples of street trees that are planted on the private property side. And these, I had a little bit more of a challenge of finding some more mature neighborhoods with the trees on the private property side, but we're trying to do our best to show some examples. And you can see here where the trees start looking more like front yard trees, because they're so far off of the curb line of the road. But this would be about five to eight feet off of the right-of-way line, the planting of these street trees. And then you can see how they don't bring in or enclose the street for slowing traffic down. A neighborhood with new trees on the private property side, and then some that are there for a few years. And then once again, here are some more private property side, although this neighborhood here is interesting, where some of the streets, where there's the sidewalk on only one side, the side without the sidewalk, the trees are planted in the right-of-way. And then some with them then on the private property, just to kind of give you a hybrid experience of what may, what things may look like with our new regulations as well. And then we have some neighborhoods with no street trees. However, we also have some neighborhoods without street trees that look like they have street trees because the developers left so many mature trees, that really, you can't plant street trees in those neighborhoods because they've done such a good job. So there's quite the variety of ways to apply and to utilize street trees in our community. And so, of course, one of the things that we're always interested in are what are other Wake County municipalities doing? And so, last week, I contacted ten of the Wake County municipalities, I've gotten responses from six of them, Apex, Cary, Raleigh, Roseville, Wake Forest, and Wendell, so I can report about what they're doing. And so, of those communities, Raleigh, Roseville, Wake Forest, Wendell, all require street trees, and they're to be placed in the right-of-way, forty feet on center. And so ours are already fifty to sixty-five feet, so we do require less trees. And then if trees are planted, so they're not required, but if they are planted, they require them to be planted in the right-of-way, is Cary and Roseville. And Roseville has some different regulations depending on types of subdivisions, and so does Cary. And then if street trees are planted, that they require them to be planted on private property, Apex requires all their trees to be on private property, Cary has a mixture right-of-way and private, just depending on the location. None of the neighborhoods, or none of these communities require root guards. And Apex, Cary, Raleigh, and Roseville specifically state that maintenance is required by the property owner. Wake Forest is the only known community in Wake County and one of, only a handful in the state where the town actually does a town-wide maintenance of street trees. And so, essentially, we'll continue our internal debate of what we should do, and we're really looking forward to the next six months to see how these new regulations actually work out in the field with moving street trees in the right-of-way, outside of the right-of-way. We're, planning and engineering are working closely together in ensuring that root guards are put in place, and really beefing up our inspection procedures for street trees. And so with that, if you have any questions, discussion, or...
Do you want to discuss this at this moment, or ask some questions, and/or give it some thought, and get back to us via email or in person, whatever, whatever the pleasure of the board is?
I just, one of, one of the things that's really brought to mind is the differences in all of the different neighborhoods. When you go into Sunset Ridge, south, there are no street trees in that first original section there. People always thought there was trees, but there, it was the trees left by the, each of the lots that were developed by individual builders. Then you get down to Holly Park, and you've got street trees, there's the first section of that that has a lot of street trees there. And it does have a more closed-in feeling when you drive through there. And we've had a lot of issues that come up recently with the street trees, and people saying that they're, they're getting into the sidewalks and getting into the sewers and stuff. We haven't had proven that they're in the sewers, we've gone out and looked at that stuff. The biggest thing that I've seen that's going to improve things is that we're replacing the, the lights on the streets with the LED lights, and sometimes the, the crews can't even get up into the canopy because the light is up in the top of the tree. They planted the tree right next to where the light pole is, and it's obscured, so I think this is going to really help with these new regulations, a more judicious putting of the trees away from the light poles, or there's coordination of that, anyway. But I think we just still need to look at it and see, because we are going to have problems no matter what we do, so.
Actually, just this past week, Laura Holloman was telling us that when she goes into meetings and we say that we have street tree requirements, and we share with them our new spacing requirements, developers are always quite happy to hear that we've actually thought about logistics with, with street trees, and making sure that it's not a rigid forty feet on center.
Are there comments or questions this evening?
No, I've got more street trees than I can handle. And on my property, so.
Anybody else? We'll give it, we'll give it a lot of thought, Gina, and thank you for updating us, and I think, obviously, we'll have some comments a little later on, and we'll work together.
Certainly, yeah, as some of our new regulations are getting installed, we will share with you to let you know when to go out and take a look at some of these.
And that's what we want to see.
Okay. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
For your hard work on this.
Yes, good job.
Gen eight A is public hearing annexation A fourteen dash oh-four, New Hill Road property, and Laura Holloman. She won tonight, she beat me. I had to say that, right? You deserved to win.
Yes, she did beat you.
I know she did, Jimmy, thank you.
I just was so excited about the meeting tonight that I beat you. A lot of good things going on in Holly Springs. So the annexation this evening is for request to rezone, or excuse me, to annex around one hundred and fifty-six acres. Several property owners consisting of five parcels. This is located along New Hill Road on the south side. You can see, this is the Ancient Oaks, this is the second entrance into Twelve Oaks. So this is all the Twelve Oaks land here, and this is not currently part of Twelve Oaks, but is in the town limits, as you can see with our existing current planning jurisdiction map. Everything in the dark green is current corporate limits. So this is a voluntary annexation request, meaning that these property owners have signed and are willing to voluntarily become a part of Holly Springs. So regardless of if, you know, this develops or not, they will be tax-paying property owners of the town of Holly Springs. But more importantly, you know, a lot of these tracks do set themselves up for development. And our land use plan, and I'll get to it later tonight, you know, has this property designated as residential. So when we move forward with, with planning our infrastructure, you know, engineering looks at the land use plan, and that's why they've sized the wastewater treatment facility the way they have, and built the reclaimed water facility in this area, so that, you know, when, when these properties come in and ask us to be a part of Holly Springs, we can say, yeah, we have, we have plenty of capacity to handle you, and, and come to us, and let, and let your tax base, and let your infrastructure required improvements that you require to do, road improvements, utility upgrades and connections, that sort of thing, let us benefit from that, other than, you know, them going directly to Wake County and, and not having access to utilities. And down the road, you know, they, they start to have problems with their septic and well systems, and you know, we have to, we may get in a situation to where we have to help those poor property owners out. So this is, this is planned growth, this is something that we've, we've planned for, and this is part of the process of a, of a voluntary annexation.
We didn't go out and ask them for that.
We did not.
They came to us.
That's correct.
And if, and that, it's Wake County property?
Well, it's privately owned, but it's currently in Wake County's jurisdiction.
Right, so they're coming to us, because if not, Wake County could eventually do something with that.
They could, they could move forward and, and build in, under Wake County's.
Rules.
Rules.
Are there questions or comments?
Well, the point, I think, here is that they came to us wanting to be annexed.
Again, voluntary.
Voluntary.
That's correct.
And that's what voluntary means.
Development requirements tend to be much more, much looser than our requirements.
Liberal. And that would be well in septic out there if it was stayed in Wake County, so this at least puts them on our water and sewer, at least gives them a safe op, an option for these people that eventually, if it gets rezoned and whatever happens, it'll give them a chance to have clean water and sewer when it is developed.
And plus, we'll have more control on how that development is developed.
More control, and gives us more, more cash flow into paying for our infrastructure improvements.
That's the good side of it.
Anything else for Laura at this point? If not, we'll open public hearing, and Don Mizell, you've signed up for both of them, so I'll give you the eight A first. And please repeat your name and address, although we don't really need that, but we, some people do.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Don Mizell, two oh eight, Premier Drive, here in Holly Springs. Thanks for allowing us to speak this evening. Won't add a whole lot to what staff's put out before you. I am here tonight on behalf of the contract purchaser of the properties, the five parcels, Deacon Investments. The property owners have signed annexation petitions, and they and we are very interested in having this property under the town of Holly Springs jurisdiction, so we can move forward with our due diligence and hopefully a development plan at some point in the future for these properties. As staff told you, the property's not even in your extraterritorial jurisdiction at this point, so in order to start having those discussions with staff and move forward with any plans for the property, we'll need to be in your jurisdiction, and that's why we're here this evening. There are four property owners that make up the five parcels. Mr. Seavey has two parcels, the Love family has one, Mr. Burt has one parcel, I believe Ms. Newton, Orlean Newton, has the largest property, I think she's actually in attendance here tonight. How you doing? So everybody's on board with the annexation, and we look forward to a positive outcome for our petition. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mizell.
At this point in time, we've closed the public hearing, is there further conversation and/or comments? Seeing none. There you go.
Motion to adopt annexation ordinance fourteen, A fourteen oh four, annexing one hundred and fifty-six point four-four plus or minus acres owned by John R. Burt, Billy C. Love, Orlean B. Newton, and William Seavey, and more particularly described as Wake County pins as listed on the screen, to the, into the corporate limits of Holly Springs.
Motion's been made in second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
Gen eight B, public hearing, fourteen R E Z oh nine, the Burt Track, Laura Holloman again.
Okay, so, just as a refresher for, for the audience and those out there, whenever a property is annexed into town, it's given an R thirty residential zoning classification. So as of twenty seconds ago, these are now appropriately zoned R thirty.
It's been that long?
I paused, I figure I paused for about five seconds. So the request tonight is to rezone these freshly annexed parcels from R thirty to R-ten conditional use. Now, they are shown here. And surrounding it, you've got the Twelve Oaks pud, which we know and love, and then we have, these are kind of, they say they're part of a pud, they're part of an old Finestera expired planning unit development. So they cannot, but Finestera does not exist because Twelve Oaks is also part of Finestera. So don't think that we're going to resurrect Finestera. These, whenever these parcels come in, they'll, as an aside, they'll move forward with a freshly zoned district, you won't have an old planning and development to come up. This, of course, is the Holly Springs Business Park Planning Unit Development, and this is the Navarre District. And then you've got kind of a large, kind of swath that's Duke Progress Energy land. In terms of the land use plan, you can see these parcels here again, this is designated as residential. The residential classification allows for densities that range from two to fifteen, dwelling units an acre, fifteen, of course, being the most dense, but that's situated around our community growth areas and our regional centers. So, you know, of course, nearby, we've got the Regional Center of Holly Springs Town Center, and this is why this parcel here is zoned RMF fifteen, as well as this parcel kind of here, because that's where we want the high density. So as you, as you come out of that kind of epicenter of high, of high density and high, high development, you kind of, you've kind of moved out to your lesser densities. So we would want to see, you know, an R fifteen, R-ten medium-density subdivision that kind of will play into the varying transition of the business park, because one day, we hope, Duke Progress will sell some of their land to, you know, private, private developers, and, you know, we can get the business park to expand out. So that way, you would have, you know, a nice, a nice residential transition area between the business park and other kind of sensitive areas of Harris Lake. Now, in terms of the rezoning request, they did, this is a conditional use, so they did voluntarily offer conditions that will lay with the land in perpetuity. So if ever they wanted to amend these conditions, they would have to come back through rezoning and go, go through the whole process over again, they can't just delete conditions in the dead of night with no, with no, with no process. So these are, these are set in stone. So I'll go over them, and then I'll talk about number one, because that's, has changed as of late. So the gross residential density on the entire, entire project area will not exceed two-point five units per acre. The lots will not be less than seventy-five hundred square feet in size. Each house shall provide at least a standard two-car garage. Vinyl siding shall be prohibited except for accent elements of the facade, which will be limited to twenty percent of the facade area. Lots greater than sixty-five feet in width shall show house foundations of at least twelve inches vertically of brick or stone veneer over the tower foundation. Each lot shall have one of the following, a minimum of two trees, minimum of wood, tree or four shrubs, or a minimum of eight shrubs. If the houses or dwellings are front-loaded, meaning the garage is in the front facing the street, there are to have decorative garage doors. So a lot of those, you see it with windows, with, you know, kind of the carriage handle style, those are some of the things, rather than just a stand, a standard plain door is, is what that's alluding to. And then finally, architectural shingles will be, will be required, with the exception of any kind of secondary building located behind the primary house. So no, we won't make playhouses be architectural shingles or, or things of that nature. In terms of number one, this was something as a result of the planning board discussion. At the planning board meeting, they had a lot of discussions surrounding the density of R-ten. R-ten's base density is three-point-two-five dwelling units an acre. We discussed at length kind of the appropriateness of that density with the surrounding areas with regards to nearby Harris Lake, as well as... with regards to nearby Harris Lake as well as being kind of on the edge of the development currently with Holly Springs. And bearing that in mind, the planning board decided to amend the density condition to limit the project to 2.5 dwelling units per acre. I can tell you that we have since gotten revised sign conditions from the petitioner. So that has been changed, the condition to 2.5 dwelling units an acre. And with that, the planning board did unanimously recommend approval.
No other issues besides the density question.
That's correct.
Other questions or comments?
Got one technical question, more so than anything. The annexation petition was 156.44 acres. The rezoning petition's 150.99 acres. So a little bit of difference is not everything being rezoned or what's being carved out?
There's always a little bit of influx between what's kind of an estimate of deed and what is actual. So the annexation's actual, it's out there, it's surveyed boundary. And it also includes to the center line of New Hill Road. So that's kind of where you see that. But it's always, we always go by the annexation plat for the accurate acreage.
Just more curiosity of the two different numbers.
Sometimes, yeah, that's a very good question. And sometimes it's more varying than others, but...
That's a CPA question. A good question.
It was enough to catch my eye.
It was a good question. All right. Anything else?
Just something I'm just going to put out there as under the proposed number six. About each lot shall have one of the following, A, a minimum of two trees, minimum of one tree and four shrubs, or minimum of eight shrubs. I'm going to always ask developers to keep the trees. I mean, shrubs and trees, it's such a different thing, but I'm just throwing that out there.
So just, you're saying...
No, I mean, I'm just saying, I mean, that's, this is how we approach, but whenever I see a developer, I'm gonna...
That's their landscaping, not the street requirements.
I understand, but I'm just not one for clear cutting. So whenever someone comes in and they're developing, it's, I just like to be...
I think DR did that pretty much with Sunset Ridge.
That's the landscaping of the, it's not...
I understand.
It doesn't preclude them from clear cutting the subdivision.
Oh, I know, I'm not saying to change that, but that just drew my attention to that. Like where I live in Holly Glen, we have a lot of original trees there that they kind of built around, and I love that. We don't have the street trees on my street, but we have the trees that were left when you had the...
Yeah. Some of them I like to be rid of.
Anything else?
Find trees.
Okay, seeing none. We'll open the public hearing and we'll have Don Mizell back again.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, again, Don Mizell, 208 Premier Drive, Holly Springs. Staff did a wonderful job summarizing our request. When we first started out with the rezoning petition, a few months ago, we met with staff at a concept meeting and did look at the comprehensive plan and saw that there was a range of density between 2 and 8 units an acre that was appropriate for this area of town. So we went with 3.25 being the standard R-10 density. The conditions, we worked with staff, looked at some recent rezoning petitions, and tried to come up with some things that we could quantify that would move forward with the property. Because R-10 stands by itself, you know, you can pretty much design your home however you want to unless you go with the development options, part of the code, which requires some more specificity with regard to the way the house looks, the garage looks, the shingles look, all those things. So we tried to pick some elements that we could paint across the whole scope of the project that would run with the property in perpetuity unless another rezoning comes in. So we felt comfortable with these based on feedback from staff and feedback from some previous rezoning petitions. When we got to the planning board, we were a little bit surprised that the 3.25 was a little too dense for this area. But fortunately for us, we've done some conceptual plans. We've had a neighborhood meeting, as a matter of fact, and shared those plans with our neighbors, even though they're still just conceptual at this point. But 2.5 seemed to be a good number for the planning board and for staff, and it's a good number for us. So we're comfortable with 2.5 units an acre. And as Laura said, the property owners have signed off on those revised conditions and we're fine moving forward according to that game plan.
Compliments. Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this point in time, we'll close the public hearing. Further discussion, board.
I think not.
Seeing none. There are two motions, as I recall. Joni, there you go.
Motion to accept the following statement as being true. The requested zone map change from R-30 to R-10 is consistent with the vision of Holly Springs Comprehensive Growth Plan since the future land use plan map indicates this property is residential and the R-10 CU residential conditional use district allows for single-family residential developments with a maximum of 3.25 dwelling units an acre, which is appropriate for the subject properties not located within a community growth area.
Question.
Yeah, 2.5 is now changed, yeah.
2.50, right?
Yeah, 2.50. Well, that's what they say.
I know, it said there.
Yes. And just, and just so, you know, you're also correct because the planning board also agreed with the motion because it's correct. 3.25 is appropriate and not located within a community growth area. But with regards to the environmentally sensitive area, they asked for it to be to 2.5, so...
It were 2.5, correct?
Yes.
So you say 2.5, okay.
All right, motion's been made. Second? Home favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes number two. Number two.
Motion to adopt ordinance 14-REZ09 to change the zoning of Wake County pins number 0639413800 and 0639612382, 0639522804, 0639425873, and 0639427725 from R-30 residential to R-10 residential conditional use as submitted by Longleaf Development Services.
Motion's been made, second?
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made, second all favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
That's why we let you do it. You're the numbers man.
That's why we gave it to you.
Item 8C, also a public hearing, 14 UDO-01 Semiannual UDO Amendments. And this is going to be Jeff Jones, Laura Holloman, Sean Ryan, and anybody else that wants to discuss.
The whole planning department. I'll be the spokesperson for the planning department on these 57 parts to the UDO that we are changing tonight. As the mayor stated, this is our semiannual update to the UDO, and the UDO is a living document, and we strive to change it when we see necessary. Tonight, we will go over a handful of the proposed changes. I won't go through all 57 of those tonight, or we would be here for a long time. For the most part, the changes are technical corrections or amendments that are carried on through each section of the ordinance. For a commercial district, we may have the same amendment we have for commercial districts. So tonight, I want to go over five amendments that we will highlight. And one is, this first one here is modifying mailbox standards. I don't know if the public's aware or town council's certainly a little bit aware that there was a federal mandate that was passed a couple of years ago that requires individual mailboxes that states individual mailboxes at your home will no longer be a service that they deliver to, that they will, that you will need a community-style mailbox in your subdivisions. And the town is reacting to that. We are having certain, a number of subdivisions that are developing currently that are being caught off guard by the new requirement from the postal service. And we're trying to facilitate a win-win for the town that we design and have regulations for mailbox kiosks in communities and that meet the postal services standards.
The federal standard.
The federal standards, right. These are nationwide, supposedly it's going to save cost on the postal service to deliver to your home.
So they're maintaining the ones that are now...
For now. We've been told that there could be a push to change them all, that even if you've had one for 10, 20 years, that we all may be going to a community mailbox at some point in time.
But right now, it's just the new ones.
Right now, it's new ones and it's, we had a little misunderstanding as well as that we thought any new subdivision that was currently under construction could continue with the individual mailboxes. Well, that's not the case. Any new phase of a subdivision that does not, is not currently built before this mandate was started, we have to design a mailbox kiosk for those phases. So we're trying to bring those mailbox kiosks up to standards where we'll have some standards for the town and for the developers to know exactly what we're going to do. The federal government put down a mandate but had no standards for it. We meet with the postal service, they say, yeah, this is what we want, but we really don't have any good guidance for you. So we're taking some lead from some other towns and going to try to have some standards. Here's what we're changing. Cluster mailbox units shall be located along collector streets, local streets, essentially any street in the subdivision, common areas of project outside of the public right-of-way, private access easements or perimeter yards, minimum of 200 feet from an entrance to a project or a subdivision. Cluster mailboxes units shall be located at least 50 feet beyond such medians or wherever is greater, and not to encroach on any platted or recorded easements unless specifically authorized by the terms of the easement or by consent, and so not to obstruct any sight distance along any street. For the appearance of the cluster mailboxes, shall provide a decorative base pedestal cover and shall provide a finial or crown or other similar decorative caps. Any mailboxes over 20 units in the mailboxes shall have, be built of primary building material consistent with the style of the development of the project, set as a decorative pedestal or affixed to decorative posts, designed as an architectural feature to create identity of a project, of a subdivision, and provide foundation landscaping. And their parking, if individual mailbox unit, cluster unit has 20 or more receptibles, shall provide at least a minimum of two off-street parking spaces. That this won't, requirement won't apply to any project that's started prior to today. And then the maintenance of these mailbox units is to the homeowners association. So that was an attempt to have some regulations on the books for whenever a development comes in. What we're seeing now for new development happening is that they're putting the cluster mailbox units in their pool center, their recreation area, and that's where there's already parking, lighting, and people can get to those. So you'll see a lot of the new subdivisions with pools and rec centers have the mailboxes in those locations.
If my memory is correct, and it may not be, but we did a meeting on this last, not on this exact issue, but on federal regulations, and we want to thank the federal government for coming up with almost 4,000 new, I said 4,000, new regulations this year. They're doing a great job. We really appreciate that.
Yeah, and some of those regulations don't necessarily hit home, but this one's really going to hit home because you're no longer going to get that service to your doorstep anymore.
Well, like I told Hank, I hope everybody in my neighborhood likes UNC because I have to hang my flag somewhere.
Those signs are permitted, Jerry.
Jeff, wasn't there a subdivision somewhere that's in either Raleigh or Cary that they had the mailboxes out front, but they weren't getting any mail?
That's right. That was an instance where the postal, the postmaster in that district didn't communicate at all to anyone, to the developer or anything. Developer put in the individual mailboxes and the postal service just would not deliver. They've had to go in and retrofit that subdivision with a mailbox kiosk. And that was in Cary, and we've gotten several of our regulations from their pain and suffering of trying to get something on the books.
Let me ask a quick question on this. If the mailboxes are not in an area where there's lighting, are we requiring lighting grounded?
We...
Because, I mean, people coming home from work after dark and wanting to get in.
Let me double check.
We are not proposing any lighting requirements.
Oh, you're the writer, huh?
I'm the writer. The post office themselves does not have any requirements. So basically, you meet with the postmaster, you agree on a location, you throw the mailbox on the ground. They don't have any parking requirements, appearance standards.
You talking about the kiosk?
The mailbox kiosk, no lighting standards.
Oh, wow.
So we were really kind of up to our own whim to decide what was best for Holly Springs. We decided that lighting, I mean, at this time is not a necessary standard. Of course, if, like we're seeing in the clubhouses where they're putting it under a structure, lighting will most definitely be provided. What we learned from the postmasters is that they're only going to be allowing one location in any subdivision for the most part. So it will most likely always be at the clubhouse. If it's a smaller one, obviously, we can work with the developer to coordinate a location that's close to a street light.
I would be concerned with that for residents coming back and going into their mailbox at nighttime and not have any lighting and...
And I will add that, you know, we are understanding that this, what we're proposing to you tonight will probably change in the near future. This is our first attempt to get something on paper to react to the situation that's happening with a lot of our developments that have already started and need something to move forward. We just met with the postmaster last week, was the first time that we were able to actually sit down with him. And I think you'll see some additional changes in the coming weeks, perhaps next month, and we'll put that on our list to look at for you.
That's a concern.
Really, it concerns me when you've got maybe 1,000 homes in, like Wood Creek, do you have one kiosk? Or is that, I mean, is each section, like the townhomes, is that considered a subdivision where they could locate some of those there and some at the front?
The townhomes, each phase of the townhomes will each have their own mailbox kiosk. What the postmaster told us is approximately 200, maybe up to 250, mailboxes per location. So if you have a larger subdivision that has 1,000 homes, you know, you'll have four, maybe five different locations throughout the subdivision that these mailboxes will be located. Also, if you have a subdivision where a major roadway is dividing it, so if you remember Lockridge on either side of Ambarry Road, they'll actually end up with two, one on each side of the road, so you don't have to cross the major roadway to get to the kiosk.
I'd see down the line when they, the impact that this is going to have on our community when they try and retrofit this into the communities that are already there and there's no space to build kiosks, any public area anyway.
Right.
So that's going to be a real nightmare.
Yeah. I'd like to see the safety features, not only lights, but any kind of button to push in case there's a problem to the police.
We'll definitely put it on our list.
Thank you, Sean.
Maybe we should just annex, like Cary or Apex or something like that and put our mailboxes all over there. Is that a good idea? No, okay.
No.
No, okay.
Well, we can't even get the Holly Springs addresses changed from Apex to Holly Springs. You know, it's...
We've been working on that for about six years and probably have had, what, four or five changed?
Anyway.
Six, whatever.
All right. We, we'll move on from mailboxes and we'll move to, a good thing that we're seeing in new development, new residential development, is the desire to have community gardens. And that is something that we all want to see, and we're writing ordinances into the UDO, making changes to facilitate that in our, for subdivisions to be able to use that as part of their open space. So that's a good win for us. And we've already started seeing some of these happening, specifically the Beazer Project that's down by the Walmart area that'll be coming up. They had a community garden in their plans for their open space. Additionally, one addition, another highlighted amendment that we're going to, that we're proposing tonight is to define vending machines and what those, what a vending machine is and looks like and the size of a vending machine. We ran into a curious situation with the ice machine at the car wash up the street here, where we classified it as a vending machine. They put it next, they put it into a bay. We had to get some regulations for that. And that had us thinking, well, if that's a vending machine, vending machine should be next to a wall and what classifies as a vending machine. So it's an instance where we were, the ordinance did not speak to, clearly speak to what a vending machine could be and the size, and somebody tested the limits on there. And they've done it and they've gotten their approvals for that, and that's just fine. And it seems to be working out. But we want to be able to have some regulations in place for whenever the next situation occurs. But we want to be able to have some regulations in place for whenever the next situation occurs. I want to talk a little bit about the, the changes to our downtown area, our TV, our town-village zoning district. So, we are proposing, the staff is proposing that all uses in the TV district that require a development plan to become a special exception use and come to the town council for approval. Town council will then be able to act in, as a board of adjustment if, if the developer needs special regulations or special variances from our ordinances. Gives you some say in what that development looks like, kind of let staff go through the review process, bring it before you, has the public, it's a public hearing, and the public can come and voice their opinion on whatever that use may be in the downtown area. Secondly, in the TV district, we are slightly modifying the, the height of the building, buildings in downtown. We had originally proposed to planning board a 22-foot height, and we, we've kind of thought about that a little bit more. So, since the plan board meeting, we've adjusted this amendment that's before you tonight. So, we're going, we're stick, we're staying with the 25-feet building height and a two-story requirement for front and side, so that's what the building should look like from a front and a side. But we're allowing a little reduction for rears of the building down to 18 feet. That seems to be a, if you have a true rear of the building, seems to be pretty standard for downtown area. Additionally, in the downtown area, we're adjusting architectural standards that if you're building townhomes in the downtown area, and you have to use the architectural requirements for TV, which are commercial in nature, town, townhome does not have to meet the glazing requirement, which is the window requirement for their architect, for their townhome. And then additionally, if, if one is doing any modifications to a building in, in the TV district, they have to meet the current architectural standards. We're clarifying that in the UDO. Gina spoke on the next highlighted amendment earlier, which was the street tree amendment, which requires two species of trees throughout the project, a minimum of two, and then the identification of the tree species from the nursery, either through a letter and/or tags on the trees, so our inspectors can go out and clearly identify what the tree is and have that certified from the, from the nursery. Again, we had several other amendments throughout the UDO that were more technical in nature, not, not changing a whole lot. One whole section that's probably 10 parts is we got rid of vacation of plat term and how that applies. We don't do vacations of plats in town of Holly Springs, so that term and all of its association in the UDO is proposed to be, be eliminated tonight. I can answer any questions, or again, all four of us in the planning department helped write this. It's a team effort whenever we do UDO amendments, and I'm just taking the, the lead on presenting it for you tonight.
Now, let, let me ask a question. You're talking about varying the height of the, of the buildings, right? In other words, they can have it in the backside?
18 feet.
Frank can go up 22.
25.
25.
We're going to stay with 25 and a two-story requirement.
Like a backward camelback. You ever heard the term camelback?
No, it's in Phoenix.
And the front side is low and the backside's high.
Right.
So, it's sort of a reverse in the camelback.
You're right.
Okay. How will that look?
Well, the, 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 the look and the desire that the comprehensive plan has and the UDO supports is have a two-story look along Main Street. That is the regulations we have, again, the comprehensive plan, the village district area plan, you look through that plan, you'll see renderings of buildings, potential buildings, and they're all two-story buildings. We, we hope that with the regulations in place that people can be, that can be facilitated, and that a little give on the back end of going down to 18 feet gives them a little...
Okay, what's the depth that they, you know, to go get into the building, and when they can drop down to 18? With, how far back do they have to go?
Fronts and sides all have to be that 25 feet.
To be a corner.
So, all the way, 20, 25 feet all the way back?
That's right.
Okay. But I didn't want to get into a situation where we have facades.
Well, I think you may have some parapet walls at some point in time that function as getting buildings to that 25-foot height. That will be something that we'll have to see whenever plans come before you.
They'll have to go back 25.
They do, they do, yeah.
I'm assuming that the underground storage tanks are the gasoline tanks, correct?
That's correct, and that is, you know...
I wonder why we're, never mind.
Right.
No comments.
I bet y'all didn't expect all these questions.
Any additional questions?
Any other questions or comments of Jeff at this point?
Just keep cleaning them up.
Yes, no?
That's right.
Okay. At this point in time, we'll open a public hearing, but no one has signed up. Anybody left that would like to speak on this? I don't see anybody, so we'll close the public hearing. Any further comments? If not, go.
I'll make the motion to accept the following statements on that page as true.
I like that one. On that page, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Number two.
I'll read that whole one.
Okay, you can handle this one.
Motion to adopt, ordinance 14-07, approving and enacting UDO text amendment 14-UDO-01 to modify the text of the unified development ordinance as submitted by the town of Holly Springs.
Motion made, second in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Good job, Jeff.
Nicely done.
Appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks, sir.
Item 9A, consent agenda, Mayor Portem.
Motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion made, second in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. 10A, new business, Jordan Lake Partnership presentation, Kendra Parrish.
She's back.
She's back.
Last but not least, what before, is before you tonight is the Jordan Lake Partnership and the regional water supply plan, and we have Lauren Miller from Fountain Works, as well as Mike from Triangle J, that will come up and talk about the details of the, the water supply plan. But before I called them up, I wanted to go over and just sort of set the scene and the details. We have, as you know, we have the 10 million gallon allocation that, with Harnett County that we pull in from the Cape Fear River in Lillington. That water supply is our main water supply, and that will last us 10 to 15 more years. We also have a connection with the city of Raleigh that's 1.2 million gallons. That's for emergency purposes, and so, you know, we took partnership in this Jordan Lake partnership and started looking at this regional water supply plan to also secure the allocation from Jordan Lake. So, Lauren will talk about that, but just as he talks about it, something to just keep in the back of your minds and why this is important is, like with anything else, you always want to have a backup plan, and you want to have a backup plan to the backup plan. Water is super critical, as we all know, and we also are, provide water to Navartis, which is the only pandemic flu vaccination plant in the US. They need water. And so, we're always trying to make sure that we have a few avenues of source to get our water if anything were to occur. So, with that being said, I'm going to let Warren go ahead, and we've got a PowerPoint he's going to go through.
Before Warren starts, just to make sure nobody misunderstands what was said, we're not thinking that the Cape Fear River is going to dry up. That was the point.
No, no, no.
It was to handle our growth.
We've actually, the town of Holly Springs has been very progressive in securing water and sewer, and that's something that not a lot of communities can hang their hats on, and that was one of the reasons that Navartis did locate here was the security of the water and sewer. And so, with that being said, this just dovetails, we're continuing to make sure that we are looking out for the folks in the future and making sure that if anything does happen, that our citizens are well protected.
Good job.
Yes. All right.
Hi, Warren.
So, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Great to be here. Thank you for having me. Thanks for the opportunity to tell you a little bit about the Jordan Lake Partnership and the Triangle Regional Water Supply Plan. I have Mike Schlegel here. He is the Water Resource Program Manager for the Triangle J Council of Government. He is the expert here, but I'm going to go through the presentation, and I'll try to answer all your questions as we go through it. What I'm going to do is tell you a little bit about the context, the background for the Jordan Lake Partnership. I'm going to explain what, what came out of the Triangle Water Supply Plan, and just talk about what are the next steps over the next year, and then we'll have a chance to answer any questions. So, I will hit the highlights, and then if you have some more in-depth questions, we can, we can have a conversation after that. So, it has been a rainy summer, but if we think back about six and a half, seven years ago, this is what the state of North Carolina looked like. The entire state was in a drought, and if you look at where we are here, here in Holly Springs, here in the Triangle, we were in what was called an exceptional drought. Y'all remember that. Historic drought for the state of North Carolina, and of course, there was one about five, six years before that. So, that was, that was the context. These are some images of what some of the water supply sources around the Triangle look like. Lake Mickey, where Durham gets its water, Little River Reservoir and Dam, this is what it looked like. Another picture here, I believe this is Jordan Lake. And as you recall, Holly Springs had instituted odd-even irrigation water restrictions as well, so you mean, you were, you were taking action as well as this drought hit. So, with this context, the Jordan Lake Partnership was formed, partnership was formed in 2009 through inter-local agreement to focus on secure, sustainable water supply. Partnership is a planning organization. It does not advocate for policy, and again, it's focused on water supply and not water quality. So, it's a very, very focused effort. Who's in the partnership? Your neighbors around the Triangle. And not all of these folks, as you'll, as you'll see, get their water from Jordan Lake, but all of these partners want to participate in the partnership. They understand the value of working regionally around water supply. In fact, while I was sitting here, we just got word from Fayetteville that they would like to join the partnership as well. So, these are the partners, and when we talk about what area does the partnership cover, these are the water service areas here. You can see Holly Springs down in green. You'll notice that Raleigh, Raleigh is depicted in red. That's Raleigh and its merger partners, so that's about, what, six or seven, seven of the merger partners there. So, that's, that's the area, the water service area that we're talking about. This map shows the interconnections. The, the Triangle region is, as you can see from this, a lot of interconnections, very connected through, through different agreements, through physical infrastructure, and, and that's something that the partnership is also working on, and I'll talk a little bit about the interconnections work that we're doing here. Partnership is, is represented by a management team. Each jurisdiction has individuals. We've been, Holly Springs has been represented by Stephanie and Kendra, and it's led by the city of Durham. Don Greeley with the city of Durham Water Management Department is the chair of the partnership. Fountain Works serves as the third-party project manager to facilitate and manage the process. And Holly Springs cost to participate in the partnership is $2,500 per year. That's how much you pay to participate in the partnership. What has the partnership accomplished? The Triangle Regional Water Supply Plan, it's a 50-year water supply plan. I'll, I'll go through the details of that. For the first time ever, the partnership and the region are having a coordinated Jordan Lake allocation request. There is an interconnections study, an interconnections work that has been done, and the interconnection is, is important because it enables you to have backup, it enables you to have water supply alternatives, and then one of the other pieces of work is the western intake. This is a second intake system in Jordan Lake that some of the, some of the different partners will get their water from, and it's also a backup in case something happened to the Cary Apex system. We recognize that we don't operate in a vacuum. All the water flows downstream, it's all headed down towards, towards the ocean. It's been important throughout this whole process to make sure we're talking with folks down in Fayetteville and Harnett, all the way down to Brunswick County. They're concerned, they want to make sure they have enough water as well, so it's been critical that we talk with them, we keep them up to speed, we work with them. In addition to that, we meet with and talk with business groups, keeping up with the North Carolina Chamber. So, it's, it's important that we're working with all the people that are involved in this process. So, the water supply plan, I'm going to start with the key, the key takeaways, the key conclusions for this. So, in order to meet the, the water needs over the next 50 years, efficiency, conservation, reclaimed water are going to be essential, and that's one of, one of the key components, key principles of the plan. Right now, the region has enough water to meet its needs through 2030. So, if we had no new supplies, that's how long we have as a region. Much of the deficit can be met by increasing Jordan Lake allocation. This is from a, from a regional perspective, and if this plan is implemented, it would meet the demands through 2060. So, what this means for Holly Springs is Holly Springs can meet its projected long-range water needs without compromising the ability of any other community to meet their needs. That's what this means, and it means that if all the communities in the regions are able to meet their needs, Holly Springs can be assured of meeting its own water needs and also relying on its neighbors in times of water emergency. So, adopting the plan benefits Holly Springs, it benefits the Triangle. Last bullet here, the region's needs can be met without compromising downstream communities. So, this, this, there is a modeling that has gone on. We've looked, if, if the Triangle takes the amount of water that it will need in 2060, what this plan shows and the modeling that's been done is that those communities downstream will have the water that they need. That's, that's critical. So, a couple slides about, about the plan here. You've, you've seen projections like this. We all know the Triangle is going to grow. You can see in dark green is Holly Springs projected growth. This is what the demand projections look like here, and the current supply is the line, you can see that line going across right at 200. That's how much supply, so it shows when we will exceed that from a regional perspective. But one of the things that was, in the water supply plan that, that occurred is that we went through a peer review process, and so what that meant is that each of the partners had to share their demands, their needs, their assumptions with everyone else. And by having everyone look at each other's numbers, so to speak, we refined those numbers, improved the numbers, and the net result was a 10% reduction from the initial projections. So, this planning process was important because that meant a 30 to 40 million gallons per day difference in 2050, 2060. That's a lot of water by doing good planning, good collaborative work, looking at each other's plans. If we didn't do that, if that wasn't done, the regional solution that we'll, we'll share in just a minute would be much more challenging. So, this is a, this is a graph which shows, right now, we're in a surplus, right around 2030 is when we get in a deficit. So, the regional solution, big picture, this, these are, this depicts the current resources that we have. This gives you a snapshot of where the future water sources will be to meet the 2060 demand. One of the things here on the right, you'll see about four, four dots that are depicting Raleigh's future needs. Raleigh needs to secure three of those four sources to meet its needs. They do have challenges. They do have challenges. So, that's something that's going to be very important. They're working through those. But what this shows is physically where these resources are going to be. What's it look like for Holly Springs?
Can you go back to that and explain? What is the red dot? I don't understand.
Sure.
There's going to be a new source of water from those red dots?
Yeah. So, if you look at Jordan Lake.
Yeah.
And I'll give you a table. I wanted to, this is intended to be kind of a big-picture, high-level way to look at it. But if you look at Jordan Lake, the blue dot represents how much water is currently being allocated out of Jordan Lake.
Oh, okay.
Okay? The blue is the current. The red is the new.
That's an allocation number, okay.
Yeah. So, you're going to need that much more out of Jordan Lake.
Okay.
From a regional perspective.
And that much is currently available at today's lake levels?
Correct. Yeah. Right.
Okay, thanks.
Sure. Holly Springs, as Kendra said, future water sources, maintaining Cape Fear River via Harnett County, maintaining and increasing your Jordan Lake allocation. So, that's going to be your individual plan going forward. And you're all aware of that.
I didn't see Fuqua as one of the partnerships. Is there a comment that they were missing?
Yeah. Fuqua is not a...
Not a member, right.
Not a member, that's right.
Is there a reason?
No.
I'm curious.
No.
Okay. It's kind of odd that they weren't there.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
They actually, they pull from, like, they have Johnston County. They have some other southern connections, so maybe in their matrix of decisions, it might not have been as important because they do have some other alternative.
Yeah. Harnett County is not a member either.
Okay.
Fuqua purchases water from Harnett County as well as from us.
They do, yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Okay. This is what the Jordan allocation requests look like by each member. So, that gives you a sense of where we are right now is the current. The round four allocation is the one that is what each of the members are applying for right now with the state. So, you've got the current, you've got the round four, and then what it will ultimately be in 2060. So, you can see that you're currently at two. You want to maintain that and ultimately move to 2.2. At the bottom, it shows the total. The capacity of Jordan Lake is 100 MGDs. You can see it's pretty close, but we're within that range that they've said the lake can tolerate. So, the Jordan Lake allocation timeline, Holly Springs has applied, has put in their draft application to the Division of Water Resources at Deener. In two months, final applications will be due, and we expect a response. EMC is the State Regulatory Board, working with Deener. Environmental Management Commission. Expect approval, if all goes well, in a year. So, next steps, partners are going to be completing the allocation process. The partnership is going to continue to work on the Western Intake Project, the Regional Interconnections Project, which is really figuring out how you can move water around the Triangle, continue to work on regional collaborations efforts. And this is a quote. When this got started, there was an elected official from Georgia. Georgia had some significant water challenges, as you might be aware of. They spoke at a Chamber of Commerce event, shared this experience with folks here in the Triangle. And I think the idea here is that by planning, by collaborating, the Jordan Lake Partners are intending to take control of your own destiny rather than have other people decide how this will be handled. So, with that, I know I've gone through this quickly. I thought we'd have a packed house, but...
They did. They went out to find some water.
But with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions of Warren or comments?
One of the things I noticed on there, and it looks like they've taken into account is the Pittsboro with their recent annexation of that huge project that's going to be 20,000 to 30,000 people.
Correct.
Is that taken into effect as far as their allocation needs?
Yeah, correct. Correct. I mean, obviously, there's still details being worked out.
Sure.
But yeah.
How much discussion have you had, if you have? I don't know if this is in your bellywreck, of quality of water, especially with the Jordan Lake issues that seem to be coming up?
It's actually not in. The partnership focuses on water supply.
Just supply.
Yeah, water supply.
Just because you can't drink it doesn't make a difference.
That's right. But you've got plenty of it.
It does, yeah. It does not mean that the individuals that are working in the partnership aren't involved in those discussions with the partner itself.
Okay.
Separate issue.
So, this takes into account all the population projections?
Yeah. If you look at this slide here, this gives you a sense. You can see how the Triangle is going to grow, and you can see how Holly Springs is going to grow.
And if that projection is larger?
If the projection is larger. Yeah. And that's, it's like forecasting a hurricane.
Right.
You know, you know a day out pretty close where it's going to be, but when you start going farther out, you know...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
It's sort of like a funnel. You know, it's all based on good planning.
And if it's smaller, we don't have to worry about it.
Right.
Something like that, yeah.
Right. But that's also why it's a 50-year plan.
Anything else? Seeing none.
Nope.
Joni, a couple motions maybe?
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, you've got it, okay.
Yeah, I got it.
Oh, sorry about that.
And the other thing just to remember, we do conservation. We do reclaimed water. Reclaimed water buys you, extends your water capacity. If people are irrigating with reclaimed instead of potable, that extends our water capacity. It also extends our sewer capacity. If we're not letting it out in the creek, we're highly treating and putting it onto yards. So, that's another asset that we have and are using to sort of lengthen our capacity. And I think at the next board meeting, we're going to be looking at that service area and doing some tweaks to that reclaimed service area. All right. So, motion one.
I'll make the motion to adopt Resolution 14-25, supporting the Jordan Lake Partnership Regional Water Supply Plan.
Second.
Motion made second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passing unanimously, number two. Oops, there you go.
Motion to adopt Resolution 14-26, approving a time extension as addendum one to the JLP Memorandum of Understanding.
Second. Motion made second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passing unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Kendra. Appreciate it. I have number 11, other business. I want to start real quick and say the crosswalk is still going on. We're making more progress every day. And I thank the police chief for supporting us. Thank you, John. And also, the anti-bullying crusade is in second gear now. And stay tuned because we're making progress on that one, too. There's now a crusade. Other other business?
Well, I was recommended by Ms. Lee over here to have a shout-out.
A shout-out?
Shout-out about a wonderful dress shop in Holly Springs.
[laughing].
So, if the ladies out there in the audience, make sure you make it over there to see the dress bar.
Another business that has opened, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
To meet them today.
What else?
Didn't excite us too much.
Come on.
It's just so nice to meet...
Doesn't excite my husband either.
New businesses that come to Holly Springs. It's so nice to meet them and...
Oh, yeah.
Yes, they really are. This is a great, and that whole area is nice. I mean, it's right nestled between my three favorite stores. Oh, two favorite stores.
What else?
I think, I'd like to see us get an update from Rex as far as the hospital. I mean, we battled so long to get that allocation for the hospital here, and now since the certificate of needs been issued, we haven't heard anything from them. And I think people are, they're wondering what's happening out there. And I think maybe...
I can't remember the date that we have that scheduled. I just can't tell you right off the bat.
You could look into maybe get that schedule. Rex...
Invite them to a council meeting. I like that idea.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
There is a date set. I just can't remember what it was. But it's in the near, near future, and that exactly is the same thing that we ask. I remember that they told me, right after the certificate of need was approved, it takes about a year to plan the hospital, and it takes about another year to build the hospital. So, I'm guessing a year to a year and a half right now, but I'll find out and have specific information for you shortly.
I heard from someone that they were in their capital planning stage right now.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Whatever. It would be nice, especially for the people here that are interested.
It's on the docket. I just don't remember the date. What else?
Well, I'll counter the dress bar news with some baseball news.
Counter, counter.
Oh, come on.
Coastal Plain League just, I guess, concluded their, I guess, it's a contest for naming the Holly Springs Coastal Plain League franchise. So, they indicate that by the, around the end of this month, they'll come up with the new, I guess, mascot or team name as well as color scheme and so forth.
All right.
I like the unicorns. I think it has kind of...
No, no, no. Did they say, did they have a good amount of people?
They just said that it was concluded and they should have some decisions by the end of the month.
It's not as exciting as the...
What else?
I'm just putting out, as you know, I substitute teach here. I was at the high school. And the lead teacher in the autistic classroom asked me to ask if anybody has any, there's a few certain items they would really like to have. Old keys.
Old keys?
Keys, because the students learn to sort them by shape and different things like that. Old, empty, cleaned-out pill bottles with their lids because they learn to put things in and close them. And these are activities they do repeatedly every day. So, they do wear through them. Shoe boxes and yogurt containers with lids. And they need lots of them because they do go through them each year. So, and there's a lot, a lot more stuff, but I haven't got the complete list. But, you know, they can bring it by the high school and just label it for the autistic classroom, or contact me and I'd be happy to come pick it up.
Can you have them send us an email or you send us an email exactly what they want? Maybe we could put it on our town website or something like that. We could.
That'd be great. That'd be great.
Camara's sitting there taking this all in. She's going to tweet it as we speak, I bet.
Well, people are loving that.
It's a good thing. It's a good thing. What else?
Only comment I've got is, I had a resident come up and ask me about the speed limit signs that we have going north Maine up by Food Line. It's 45 miles an hour, right, it goes to 45, right there at the crosswalk that comes across from Windward Point over to Food Line. And was there something that could be looked at to possibly reduce that 35 at least beyond, to beyond the crosswalk area? So, I pass it on.
Good point, yeah.
Okay.
Talking of crosswalks, I think one of the things we've got coming up with the new subdivision going in there by Sug Farm, you've got sidewalk all the way in front of their place, coming all the way down to just opposite where our sidewalk ends on the other side. Is it possible for us to get a crosswalk there so that people could go across and be on the sidewalk all the way up?
Do you think there's a gap around Upper Longville, around the curve? Would it maybe...
Oh, great.
Where there's money budget that actually looking like you might be able to make some money off of, you know, the crosswalk on the side. It doesn't matter about subdivision, you just have to call it.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
You'll just stay on that north side and head into Sug Farm because that's where the best rate is.
Yeah.
And so, one of the, we also are applying to some government for that money. And so, one way or the other, that's very high on the side.
Okay, great. That's...
Or save money, or get money.
Awesome. Good. Thank you.
And I reminded that road, Grigsby Road, is that up for widening or leading into Sug Farm?
Just like when development comes in, they'll widen.
Part of it, yeah.
Yeah. Remind, yeah, because that's really now an area for all those cars.
Something to keep our radar on.
Oh, yeah. We need to keep...
We don't want it too odd, they'll speak.
That's true, yeah.
Yeah, but it's...
Gina will have us plant some trees. It's going to soften it.
The right trees.
It's an edge of a county, that's right.
Well, you have two choices. Never mind. Anything else? Managers report.
Yeah, in keeping with the meeting tonight, we have one more brief presentation.
Yes.
I'd ask Joni when, during the meeting, if she could give us a brief update on our branding study.
Oh, good.
Because she's been working really closely, she and Jenny and some other staff members on, or with Street Sense, which is the group that town council elected to, or selected to do this project. And my understanding is we're in the gathering information phase, and we really need the help of the public at this point. And we've actually gotten some very good support up to this point. So, I'd ask her if she could to give us a brief update.
Yeah, so this is off the cuff. And speaking of dress bar, and I was walking around, I guess, when y'all were talking about it, but...
Yeah, this is too.
Amy Copperman.
Sherry's outfit is today.
Really, too? Oh, my goodness.
I told Joanne a day, she really does look very nice in black. It's a very nice outfit.
Well, my son's some new catching gear at Dick's Sporting Goods. I could have him to show it, so...
That's my home away from home, so...
I got a new sport coat at Walmart. No, never mind.
Well, that's one brand. This is our brand. I'm going to talk about our brand.
Go for it, Joni.
About two weeks ago, Street Sense conducted a survey in our community, and the goal was to get about 500 people to give them words and images that say Holly Springs to them. Well, they spoke to almost 1,000 people who responded online, to the online survey. And then they took all of that input and they came up with three themes or moods, and that's what's in front of you right now. And there's another online survey that this, these three moods are featured in. And now they're trying to kind of zero it down and say, okay, we got these three themes. Let's, do you agree that these are the three things that say Holly Springs? And if not, why? Or if so, why? And they may take a little bit out of one theme and put it with a color scheme from another theme. But what we have is, the first one is strong foundations. That goes back to our history. It goes back to the importance of our schools in our community. It goes back to our families in our community. And it also visually refers to the stacked stone features and some of our pillars and some of the older homes like on Raleigh Street. So, they saw and felt a strong foundation was a theme for Holly Springs. Another theme, close-knit and connected. There was one of the strongest phrases that people used to describe Holly Springs was One of the, some of the other words were small town, safe, neighborhoods. And I think it all goes back to what's important to people and their quality of life. So, those images there illustrate what makes Holly Springs close-knit and connected. Our families, our children, our parks, and our architecture. We're going to go back up to, with each color, with each grouping of photographs, there's a color scheme in the left-hand corner, and it's drawn from those photographs. So, they're saying, this is a mood. What do you think of this mood? Then there's the close-knit and connected mood. Again, these colors right here are drawn from these images that depict close-knit and connected. Another theme, growth and progress. We have Novartis. It's a cutting-edge flu vaccine pharmaceutical plant. Then we also have our fiber optic network. We have a strength in our community towards growing and attracting jobs here and being a vibrant and dynamic community. So, growth and progress. They took pictures that illustrated that. Some of them are here and some of them are other places, but they all show that vibrancy. And then there's a very vibrant color scheme. So, now, those three moods are out there on an online survey throughout the rest of this week, and it can be found at this website, which is, and I'm going to give it to you. which is, and I'm going to give it to you, if you'll write it down and go to it and share it with your friends. It's www.streetsense.com/2, the numeral two, sense, C-E-N-T-S, because they want your two cents worth. So if you'll share that with your friends and your neighbors to go to that website sometime this week and answer four questions. They basically want you to say, does this say Holly Springs to you? And then they want you to rank the boards in preference. Then they'll take that information that they gather from folks here, and it'll help them narrow their focus down to come up with, and it may be a combination of all those moods, but they'll come up then with some images and phrases that they will bring back to us in a couple of week, to the, weeks to the advisory committee, and we'll eventually end up with an idea of who we have become.
Joni, was, was that survey that Two Cents did at the farmer's market the same?
This is the, the one that I'm asking, telling you about right now. This is what they were doing in town this weekend.
That was the one that was there, okay.
Yeah, so it started with, they were in town actually doing it in person, but it continues online this week.
Okay.
And you said streetsense.com/...
Two cents.
Two, okay.
Number two.
The number two, and then cents.
Yeah, okay, good, thank you.
Sure. And one other thing I wanted to tell y'all about, this is a little bit unrelated, but Mark, Tamara and I went to Minneapolis last week, and I was telling you, we were notified we were finalists in a contest, and we won second place. It's a Silver Circle Award, so just wanted y'all to know about that. And it was for the Memorial Day event where we set the steel in the War on Terrorism monument.
Who won first, Joni? Remember?
What is the name? Issaquah?
Issaquah.
Issaquah, Washington. And it had something to do with the Super Bowl, so we, we had some stiff competition.
Yeah.
We're going to have the Super Bowl here next year.
They changed the name of their town, which if I was called Issaquah, I would too. No, they did it for the Seahawks or something. They called it, they changed the name of their city, and they thought that was really creative, I guess. And it was, but we don't have a Super Bowl nearby, so I think we did pretty good.
We're the second safest city to live in North Carolina, too, so it kind of goes along with it. And Pinehurst, as you might recall, is number one. Mm-hmm, okay. Thank you, Joni.
Joni, it was interesting. I was out at RTI about, uh, two weeks ago, and they, up on the big screen, they were doing, they, they're, they were doing a branding study to rebrand themselves.
Oh, is that right? Fuqua is two. Knightdale just got finished. Fuqua is rebranding.
Been a lot of changes in the region, so...
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I think everybody is trying to...
Find themselves.
Find themselves, you're right. We're so many new people here, so.
Thank you, Joni.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anything else, Chuck?
No, sir, that's it.
That's it?
Thank you, Joni.
Counselor, closing session?
Yes, sir.
Oh, my goodness.
Oh, what? I can, I can do a presentation if you want.
No.
You be quiet.
A slide presentation?
No.
He may not like his presentation.
Motion to adjourn.
On favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.
Thanks for staying. Good night.